I declare a quorum, and we are now in order. Dr. Hardings and Mr. Gronen Dyke will not be here this evening, so I will be chairing the meeting, so bear with me. We have a special guest with us to help us with opening. Stephanie Lewis is a fifth grade student from Smithburg Elementary. So Stephanie, if you'll come up to the mic and we'll all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic flourishing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Stephanie, don't go away. Tell us something about yourself, and you're a fifth grader, and what you like to do in school and what you like to do outside of school.
In school, I like to write and read. Those are my favorite subjects, and I like science. And outside of school, I like to play soccer and play with my friends.
Excellent. I think you have some special folks with you this evening. Would you please introduce them for us?
These are my mom, this is my mom and dad, this is Chris Lewis and Steve Lewis, and this is my principal, Mrs. Bergen.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, and thank you for bringing Stephanie to see us. Would you like to share anything else with us, Stephanie? Thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate it. Do any of my colleagues have other guests they would like to introduce? So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the agenda as printed this evening. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify. Any opposition? Passes six to zero. And next to the approval of minutes.
Madam Vice President, I move for the adoption of board minutes from the closed session, Tuesday, April the first, 2014, and also a set of minutes from the business meeting of the same day. Move for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. A second?
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. All those in favor? No opposition, six to zero. We're now to public comment, and we have two individuals who have signed up. First on the list is Mr. Perini. Would you come forward? You have three minutes this evening.
Good evening. This is Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. My name is Peter Perini, and I am a candidate for the Washington County Board of Education. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak with you. At the last board meeting, we were all pleased to see your recognition of the student athletes who made their way to the state finals. During that presentation of medals, Dr. Wilcox said that these athletes not only did well on the field, but in the classroom as well. As you will recall, my personal experience is through my three children, all of whom attended Washington County Public Schools and all of whom were student athletes. They all three excelled academically while simultaneously playing sports. I mention this today because there seems to be an undercurrent of activity around the country to cut sports from public schools as a cost savings measure. This concerns me greatly. I feel that the high school sports are an integral part of high school life. The benefits of being a student athlete are significant, physically and mentally. For those who have the opportunity to participate in sports comes the added responsibility of completing the training necessary to be a good athlete while at the same time meeting all of the academic requirements. That is to say, they must do all of the schoolwork that every other student has, plus the team practices and games. This requires student athletes to have the discipline to spend their time wisely. As I mentioned, my three children were all student athletes, and they all had very high grade point averages, and they were all in the International Baccalaureate Program. The sports programs in our high schools are much more than the games that they play. The programs teach sportsmanship to students, both athletes and fans. Good sportsmanship is a lesson in temperance and civility. There are few life lessons as strong as playing sports that help our children learn how to respond to situations. And the benefits of the sports programs goes well beyond the student athletes. A strong sports program fills a school with pride and school spirit. It brings together students, parents, alumni, and staff in a way that no other activity does. A sporting event is an opportunity for all students to form a bond, to be involved in something outside of the classroom. In this day and age of Xbox and Internet gaming, it is increasingly important for the kids to be a part of something active. It builds camaraderie and friendships, and it brings together groups that may not otherwise interact. I had the opportunity to experience the excitement and enthusiasm of Washington County Public School sports as a high school referee for many years. I thoroughly enjoyed interacting with the athletes, coaches, athletic directors, and the fans of our schools. For the student athlete, playing sports has a tremendous effect, especially when the team is fortunate enough to have a really good coach, and we have some really good coaches in Washington County. Athletes are conditioned to be physically fit by exercising, eating right, and maintaining a healthy lifestyle. And for many, that conditioning stays with them long after they have hung up their cleats or taken the last shot or finished the last race. As an epidemic of obesity in the United States grows, we should take a look at how we are helping our children strive for a healthy lifestyle. Being part of a team, being a catalyst for school spirit, being prepared for an athletic contest, and being a symbol of good sportsmanship all lead to building good character in a student athlete. We all know that character counts. It counts in how we live our lives, for the choices that we make, and how we treat others. For my family, the opportunity for our children to play sports in Washington County Public Schools was a tremendous experience. So I encourage you all to place the appropriate emphasis on the sports programs and student athletes of the Washington County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perini. Any response from my colleagues? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Mrs. Marston.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mindy Marston. I am a candidate for Board of Education, for a position. I want to applaud the Board of Education for your vision statement, building a community that inspires curiosity, creativity, and achievement. The recognition that it requires an entire community to help our young people be prepared to learn is key to the future success of our community. Over the past several years, I have been involved with the Strategic Community Impact Plan and the United Way of Washington County's shift from outcome funding to a community impact model. This model encourages and rewards larger collaborations of organizations, both public and private, to deal with our biggest problems. Poverty has to be the largest single deterrent to having young people ready to learn when they come to school. Parents who are struggling to feed their families cannot be as involved with their children's schooling, or for the matter, their lives, as they might want. Children who are hungry, tired, abused, or otherwise neglected have difficulty being ready to learn in the classroom. It is easy for people to say that public schools are failing in their mission to provide the best education available to our children. Perhaps we should say that our community is failing our children by not dealing with the root causes of this problem. This is an ongoing conversation that we need to continue over our entire county. The goal is to come up with a comprehensive plan to attack the root causes of poverty and to provide wraparound services to children and their families. The Board of Education needs to be involved in this discussion because the public schools see the result of poverty every day in the classroom. This is a strong, caring community. There are many wonderful organizations dealing with aspects of this issue. We need to coordinate available services and provide them in a cost-efficient and effective way as possible. Our community only succeeds when our children succeed. Thank you for letting me speak.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Marston. Any response? Very good. Thank you for your points. Well taken. All right. Moving on to new business. Dr. Michael, I believe you are up here on the consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Vice President, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. This evening, we have six bids and one RFP that we're piggybacking off of from Carroll County, which we've done so before. The first bid is for security improvements at Potomac Heights. As you recall, we've had 15 security projects at this point. Eight were awarded in a previous board meeting. Six were awarded to another contractor, and this contract was broken out because of a little larger project. This will provide significant improvements to the office space, and the biggest improvement to that school will be to the nurses station. Right now, actually, the door opens into one of our fixtures in order to utilize the space, so this will be a big improvement to that. And we're requesting the board consider this bid to be awarded to R.A. Hill Incorporated. It's a combination of CIP funding and general fund money to make that match of the CIP money in the amount of $266,150. Excuse me. Our next bid is for North High bleacher replacement inside the gymnasium. This is a QZAP project. The school will be matching the $65,000 coming from the QZAP project with a 10% volunteer hour support. There are hours assigned to various types of volunteer hours, and that gives us a match to our $65,000 coming from QZAP funding, and the remainder will come from the general fund. This, we're recommending to TJ Distributors Incorporated, the amount of $140,700. Our third bid, roof replacement at Clear Spring Middle School. We're recommending to go to JR Roofing. This is a contractor that completed the roof work here at the central office, and that is a CIP FY14 project as well, in a combination of CIP money and general fund funding in the amount of $774,251. We have several window and door replacement projects. The first is at Boonsborough High School. We're recommending that it be awarded to Home Right of Baltimore, again, CIP funding from FY14 and general fund match in the amount of $531,881. A window and door replacement at Boonsborough Middle School, the McGinnis General Contractor Incorporated, again, a CIP project, general fund match in the amount of $227,800. And our third project for tonight, the windows and doors, is E. Russell Hicks. We're doing a substantial amount of work there over the last couple of years, so this will be a nice addition to that with new windows and doors at Hicks. To Callis Contractors, we recommend the award be made to, again, it's FY14 CIP project and match with our general fund in the amount of $527,000. The last item is the piggyback on the Carroll County RFP, and this is for network switches. And these will go into the new Bestra Elementary in the amount of $68,430. I'm glad to try to respond to any questions you might have, but we're requesting your approval at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Madam Vice President, I move to approve the list, and I will read it for the record.
Thank you.
To approve the bids for security improvements at Potomac Heights Elementary School to R.A. Hill at $266,150. Bleacher replacement at North Hagerstown High School to TJ Distributors at $140,700. Roof replacement at Clear Spring Middle School to J&amp;R Roofing at $774,251. Window and door replacements at Boonsborough High School to Home Right of Baltimore at Window and door replacements at Boonsborough Middle School to Mengeeny General Contractors, Inc., at $227,800. Window and door replacement at E. Russell Hicks Middle School to Callis Contractors at $527,000. An approved quotation, number Q0000795, for network switches for Bestra Elementary School by Skyline Technology Solutions at $68,430. Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Questions, anyone? Yes.
I'm just curious, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, Mr. Michael. I know we've done a number of these security improvements over the last couple of years. Do you know how many more there are to be done?
The balance of, I think we were awarded about $610,000 of security money last year, and this would use up the majority of the money based on these 15 projects. Because some of them come in a little bit higher than our original bid, we're eligible to reapply some of the balance of the money, just resubmit our application, which will reduce some of our contribution from the general fund. And then I think we're going to have about $30,000 left, which will probably do some key and door hardware type work across the system, or some additional security features that probably won't involve vestibules.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions, Mr. Bailey?
I would assume that the replacement at North Hagerstown High School, the bleachers, would include everything, right side, left side, end of the court?
Yes. The two long sections are motorized so that they move in and out on a switch, the way I understand it. The ones that are on the end, the opposite end of the entrance to the building, will actually still be operated manually to pull those out. It's a fairly small section of bleachers. A couple of sections of the bleachers, because the way they do the North High hubcap, there's requests from the school that they be motorized separate so the whole section doesn't come out at all at once. So on kind of the left-hand side, as you look at the bleachers, I believe that portion of bleachers will actually come out in two sections.
So actually, there will be no reduction or increase in seating capacity?
We will lose a little bit of seating capacity as we have with all bleacher projects because of ADA and because of the stair requirements. Right now, we pretty much use the bleacher seating as the stair entrance to the various bleachers, but there's actually steps built into these. I think we drop about 50 or 60. I had that number in my head. I can't quite come up with it. 15, 50, or something like that, I believe, would be the seat capacity. It was a little over 1,600 before.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Michael.
Yes.
Yes, I'm curious to know, are the bleachers there original to the school, or were they replaced?
The bleachers were replaced about 25 years ago.
25 years.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Michaels, when looking at the consent agenda, I'm seeing the vast majority of them appear to have come in underestimated costs. I mean significantly so in some cases. Can you help me understand, since we're sort of, I thought things were starting to increase in this industry?
I think the greatest challenge, I think, is where architects and engineers are trying to outguess the market. About the time they lowballed, and then things were going up, so they made adjustments, I think, to their estimates, and now they're overestimating in some cases. Probably the biggest delta we have might be on the roof project.
Yes.
I know staff conducted a scope review with the contractor very carefully to make sure that they didn't miss something in the design or, you know, one of the requirements of the roof project. It's just the product that they're using was significantly cheaper, did meet the 20-year warranty, and fell in lines with the bidding documents, so we were able to reap some substantial savings there.
And we've worked with J&amp;R Roofing before.
That was the company that did the Center here for Educational Services.
Exactly. So they have a good track record, so we're comfortable with.
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting. Thank you. Okay. Any more questions or comments before we put this to a vote? Mr. Bailey's motion on the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Six, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. All right. We're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilcox?
No report this evening, Madam President, with one exception, and that is just to say that on May 8th, we'll be having a community open house in this building. We'll get those details up on the website. We'll also get them out through the local paper shortly, so we're looking forward to hosting our community in this beautiful new facility.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll repeat that announcement at our next meeting, so we will do as much outreach as we can. Thank you. And while you were giving your report, I think our next report is up.
So we wanted to give you a little bit of an update. Thank you, guys, for coming forward on the primary academic acceleration camp that we'll be hosting this summer for some of our young people. And then Mr. Akers will also talk a little bit about what we're going to do this summer for our older kids. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. Matt, will you begin?
I will begin.
Could I interrupt just a moment? Would you prefer questions during the report or hold them to the end?
We'd actually prefer no questions.
Oh, well, that wasn't a choice. I only get that.
Whenever you'd like. I think I'll take them. There's a moment.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Proceed.
Good evening, Ms. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As Dr. Wilcox said, I will be presenting some information regarding the primary academic acceleration camp. This information was shared recently with the CNI Committee about two or three weeks ago and had some really good conversations, and we're excited moving forward with the program. The program dates are set up for June 30 through July 1st. It's a Monday through Thursday program with the exception of the July 3rd in observance for the July 4th holiday. We're going to continue to offer the student times from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. with an extended date of 5:00 for the parents who need to juggle working schedules. At that point, the parent transportation will be required. We're going with the designated site approach this year, where we have identified six sites, and then we've also identified feeder schools. You'll see here the six sites are Clear Spring Elementary, Morgansville, Pangborn, Rockland Woods, Smithburg Elementary, and Williamsport Elementary. And when you look at the feeder schools, essentially, the students that are attending those schools, they will attend the designated sites with transportation provided from those designated feeder schools. Staffing for the program, I will remain the primary contact for the PAC program. We will be working closely with the building principals and site coordinators. The site coordinators are going to be the pseudo-administrators, working closely with me to make sure the program is running smoothly, but then we'll also be working in conjunction with the principal in each of the sites to ensure the consistency of the program, making sure things are moving forward. Principals are in and out of the buildings a lot in the summer, so this will provide a consistent person in the building during the actual program. We also have, obviously, our classroom teachers and encore integration teachers, instructional assistants, food and transportation services, and Meredith's Health will be at each of these sites. If you look at the chart here, this is our projected enrollment and staffing numbers. We have a projected enrollment at each of the sites. That's our targeted enrollment that we're looking at as well. And you'll see here that the site coordinators, we have one at each site. The smaller sites, the two smaller sites that we have, most likely the site coordinators will also be doing some instructional work as well. With the larger sites, the site coordinators will probably be a little busier with working with attendants and in the classrooms and monitoring instruction. The student selections, we are currently looking at our kindergarten, first, and second-grade students who are significantly below grade level. We're identifying the first round of students through the use of our winter map assessment, where we've looked at sort of a year behind or so score, and we've identified those students that would need the significant, or that would meet those significant needs to be part of the program. We're also going to be looking at teacher recommendations, so when we send out the initial list of student names through the map assessment data, we'll also ask for teachers and administrators to think of some additional students that would be good candidates to participate in the program. The first round of student invitations should go home next week at some point, excuse me, and then additional invitations will go home through the month of May, especially once we finish our May map assessment and we can again get additional data. And if we see some students that have not made gains through winter to spring, that'll be an opportunity to invite them to be participating in the program as well. Our daily instruction will continue to focus on literacy, so you'll see here that we still have a three-hour focus of literacy. We're adding in a math component because we recognize the need for these students to also receive math instruction. We see that most of the students who are recommended through literacy skills also are struggling in math, so we recognize that as a need. We're going to continue to include a 40-minute encore or arts integration experience, and then we'll have about 50 minutes in there for lunch, recess, and some breaks. then we'll have about 50 minutes in there for lunch, recess, and some breaks for the kids to be able to get outside and enjoy some of the summer weather as well. In terms of the instructional model, this is a tier-two intervention, which means it's a smaller group focus. Our target's anywhere from 10 to 15 students. My estimate is we'll probably end up around 12 students per class, so that gives a teacher an opportunity to really break into smaller groups. We're looking at remediation, but we're also calling it an acceleration. And the reason we're calling it an acceleration is we're hoping that this will give the students the opportunity to accelerate their learning, to close those gaps, to get ready for the next school year. The language arts and math curriculum will be strictly focused on current curriculum standards that the teachers are familiar with, that the students are familiar with. And what we'll do is we'll target about, through 19 days, we'll target a handful of standards in both math and language arts, to say, these are the critical standards that a kindergarten student going into first grade need to be successful, or at least be prepared for that grade level. The teachers will then work on planning their curriculum and their focus for that 19 days, based around those standards.
Could I interrupt a minute?
Yes.
Back to the previous, you talk about the teachers will be given 19 days of standards, curriculum focus, but will have time to adjust and create, I think you mean their own learning experiences for the students. Will they be writing content?
What will happen is, we're going to, let's say, we'll take 10 standards for math that the students need to have to get ready. They'll look at those standards, they'll get the student data, and then they'll be writing their lessons, their opportunities for the kids, their smaller group works. We have curriculum that's written, and we have a lot of those pieces in place, so they'll match those standards that they can use based on what those students' needs are.
So I think the answer is no. That they're not actually writing content to, as part of their instructional?
We have a lot of that content already written.
Is already written.
Yeah, what they'll do is they'll pull the pieces from it that are going to match with the student needs.
Can a teacher adjust the content? Can they bring in, can they be extemporaneous in their teaching? I'm just trying to figure how tightly we hold our teachers to specific standards, and, you know, how does that work on the front line?
I would like for them to adjust, because the 12, the 10, 12 students they receive are not going to be on the same level on everything.
Exactly.
So the teachers are going to have to be able to adjust, they're going to have to be able to look at their map assessment data, look at the report card information, say, this child needs this type of learning experience. Now, they might build a small group within that, where the students can get some similar experiences, so they should be able to adjust their curriculum and their teaching based off of what their students' needs are. And we're going to spend time in the front end of the program before students come in doing just that. We're going to have some professional development and planning days, where the teachers will spend time with some curriculum supervisors and curriculum specialists, looking at their groups of students, and basically saying, okay, if we were trying to get them to have these standards mastered, or at least close to being mastered, or working towards those standards, what can we do to get the students to that level?
Okay, thank you.
In terms of looking at assessments for our PAC program, we are able to use a fourth administration of the map assessment. It'll be a quick snapshot of doing a pre and a post-assessment. We'll be able to look at the students when they enter the program, and when they exit the program, and hopefully see some growth from that experience. The good thing about using the map data is it's familiar data, the teachers know the data very well, they know how to use the data in terms of looking at where the students' gaps in learning might be, and they can find those areas that they can work with those students, and hopefully target those individual areas to build in with the students for getting ready for the next school year. We'll also look at some additional assessments, such as observations, writing rubrics, some running records, checkpoints, our math facts, it will be our focus for our math program as well. Where we have the 24 levels of math, we'll continue to push the kids and hopefully get them to reach the different levels throughout the course of the summer. I mentioned a few minutes ago about professional development and planning. There will be three days prior to the start of the program, where the teachers will have the opportunity to work with curriculum supervisors and specialists, as well as their site coordinators and principals. The one day will be a focus on literacy, the other day will be a math focus, and then the third day will be a planning and preparation day, where they'll take the information from the first two days, work on planning their curriculum, work on planning their 19 days, and then also have opportunity to get into their school sites to get their rooms set up for the program. Last year, we noticed that student attendance was a real big concern, so we're really trying to focus on student attendance this year. I'm going to work early with the site coordinators and the principals to identify some attendance incentives and programs that we can target at those individual school sites. I'm going to put a lot of ownership back into those school sites, so that they can really target those individual students, and target the families, and really encourage them to get there for the program. We're also looking at trying to figure out ways to make the students and parents more accountable. We're going to do follow-up phone calls for, even if it's just one day absent, excuse me, because our target is to have 95% attendance, which means really you can only miss one of the 19 days. So we're going to really be vigilant in terms of calling parents, if need be, doing home visits. And if we continue to see attendance as being an issue, then the student would not be allowed to attend the rest of the program, because obviously they're not getting the benefit from the program. Just some general additional information, we're going to hold parent and student information meetings at the PAC sites in early June, excuse me. We found last year that some of the apprehension with sending their, with students to unfamiliar schools was just the fact that they were unfamiliar. So we're going to open up those school sites, we're going to invite parents and students to come see the school, meet the teachers, meet the site coordinators, so that they have an opportunity, if it's not their home school, to see where their kids are going to be going during those 19 days. Transportation, I mentioned earlier, will be provided from the home schools, and we'll also designate a few community hubs, where we realize that transportation might be an area of concern, that we can provide a central hub that students can get on a bus and be transported to the designated PAC sites. We will also have breakfast and lunch provided to all the students, and we're going to have opportunities for various community partnerships that we are working right now, identifying some of those to sort of boost up the summer program. For example, I know we're going to be kicking off soon with the Farm Literacy trailer here next week, and we're going to do some partnership work with them, to maybe get the farm truck to one of the school sites each week, and the kids can get an opportunity to get into the farm truck, and just adding some of those other experiences to make it exciting for the kids to be part of the program.
Before we go on to secondary, would any of my colleagues like to start with questions on this area so far? Mrs. Williams?
The section that you had, primary academic acceleration camp and designated sites, I believe we talked about this in the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, that if a child is spending his summer with a caretaker, or is being watched by a babysitter in some other location, I believe you mentioned that he or she could attend a school that is not in the home area of the student, is that correct?
That is, and on the registration form, there will actually be, it'll designate the sites that they should attend based on their home school, but there's an area on there that if they need special permission to attend another site, based on, you know, I know summer schedules get a challenge with daycare, or camps, or wherever it might be, then they would have the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions?
With regard to using the transportation from the community hubs, I noticed that one of the parents was Winter Street to Clear Spring. What kind of a trip is that in terms of minutes, hours? Do you have any indication of?
That'll be, that'll be a straight bus route from Winter Street, straight out to Clear Spring. I want to, I'm not sure of the actual mileage, but it shouldn't be two, maybe 12, maybe 12 miles.
20 minutes, so for these little kids, we're looking at a big chunk of the day. If parents were to opt for the eight hours to the five o'clock, that's a long day for little kids.
Well, the instructional day is nine to three. If parents are opting for that, that's the choice that, now, but then again, though, the parents have to provide the transportation and pick them up at five o'clock.
At five o'clock.
So the nine to three program, obviously, the bus would bring them right back to Winter Street, as an example.
Other questions? I'd like to put a couple out, if that's all right. Is there an effort to reach out to the parents of these students, or to get a sense of the home environment? Because we all know that we only see them so many hours every day, so many days a year. Is that piece of this puzzle being addressed in any way?
Well, when I worked with the individual schools, when we started identifying the students, my communication with the principals and the school staff, when they start sending out the invitations, is to touch base with those families, to let them know the importance of their students being part of this program and being involved. My sense is that the principals know these families fairly well, and know a lot of the families who might be struggling, and can reach out specially and figure out ways to help support and to get them to be involved in the program.
To engage them, so after hours, they may work with their own children as well. It just seems like that's a piece. On the breakfast and lunch, for the extended, students who do the extended stay till five, do we have snacks for them?
Yes, yes.
And then the final opportunities for various community partnerships and programs, can you give me some examples of what partnerships we've set up for this?
Well, a lot of those haven't been identified yet. We have a lot of ideas. For example, I'm working with Chris McGee through the University Palace Program. We're going to do some work there with her. The farm, the farm bus is another one. We also have some opportunities, maybe do Micah's Backpack for some of our identified students. One of the things that I'm going to work with the site coordinators, when I have my meeting with them in a week or so, is to have them also identify some community areas within their district. So if they're in Smithsburg, what are some businesses or smaller community organizations that might be able to support and do some things within? So I'm putting some of the ownership back into the site coordinators, so that they can identify the partnerships within those local areas.
Great, thank you. Any more questions, Mr. Bailey?
I think you've identified the major concern, and that is attendance. And we experienced a problem with that in the past. I would just only recommend, I guess, that you brainstorm with some of your colleagues on ways that you can kind of impress upon the family the importance of having their youngster there, to keep them caught up with their peers in school and so forth. I don't want to give the superintendent additional work, but a letter from the superintendent to the parents after the schools has already made their attempts, stressing the importance of being in attendance, would be an idea that I might want to consider.
Absolutely, and the hope that we can attract a good number of families to the information sessions, to try to get them to hear the message, whether they've registered yet or not, and they're maybe holding off to find out some information, is to impress that message of the importance of their students being there.
Any way that the board can help with that, sitting board, let us know.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I am curious to know how we're going to assess the program? How are we going to come back and look at this in the fall and know whether we had an effective program, a successful program, what kind of objectives do we have in place?
Well, we're using the map assessment to look at the instructional growth. Obviously, we can, we can track the student growth with the map assessment. I would also say the attendance rate would be another success measure, to see how well we were there. But in terms of the actual student data growth, that's where, that's where the pre and post map assessment comes in.
Very good, all right. Mr. Akers?
Okay. Well, secondary summer school, it's not focused so much on the reading piece, it's really, especially on the high school level, is focused more on students earning credits if they have fallen behind, or earning credits if they want to be able to make room in their schedule to take additional courses in the following years. A list of some of the programs here. We have, as usual, our original credit. We have our repeat and recovery, which takes place, and the original credit, as you'll see, takes place at Antietam Academy. The repeat and recovery transition programs take place at one of our area schools. And then we have academic support that is in the same locations, but that's the middle school program. We also have extended school year and English language learner programs. Student hours are going to be 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Teacher hours, 7:45 to 2:15, and teachers are given some additional workdays to do their planning. Also, we have a site coordinator, which is a teacher who will be teaching, but is given some additional time to help with attendance in the morning and seeing the buses off in the afternoon. You'll note that we are going to be off on July 3 to celebrate July 4. The original credit, we have traditionally not provided transportation for original credit. It runs a little bit longer than the rest of summer school. It will be 23 days instead of just 19 days. We are doing something different this year with transportation, and that we're using depot stops, and there's a lot of reasons for that. It really slowed down the process, or made difficult the process for recruiting students into summer school, because we had to hurry up and get those lists finished and finalized into transportation, to make sure that we were going to be ready for them on the first day, and that there was going to be a bus. To take some of that pressure off school, so they had more time to talk to these families and the kids, and to get them to agree to come to summer school, we went to the depot stop. And I think it's going to really, those extra week or two that they can spend, they being the school counselors and the school administrators and teachers, trying to recruit students who need to come to summer school, I think it's going to be a helpful change for us. The step-up program and the English language learner program and extended school year, all of those programs are going to be at Antietam Academy. We have sites for the repeat and recovery and transition programs, and we have transportation that's provided for those. And Boonsborough High, which will be held at Boonsborough Middle because of some window replacement that's being done at the high school. And then we'll have Clear Spring High, North High, Smithsburg, South, and Williamsport. So the middle school students will actually go to the high school in most of those cases. And that was a change you might recall from last, that we did last year in kind of a The academic support, again, you can see the locations there, they're the same, transportation is provided, and it will, they will run the 19 days from June 30 to July 24. Just a little bit of information, last year, in our high school summer school program, we had 398 students participate, and they earned 501 credits. So some of those were, again, students who wanted to get some courses out of the way, to make more room in their schedule for things that aren't typically offered in summer school, and some of those were students trying to, you know, play catch-up because of not being successful in some courses the previous year. And I welcome your questions.
Questions, Mr. Bailey?
I guess the most obvious one would be that, well, where is Hancock? Are they linked to Clear Spring?
Yes, and we do provide a bus from Hancock to Clear Spring for those students to participate.
Questions?
If I could, just one small exception to that, they do do, they do a little transition program that is actually at Hancock, that's just to get students who are coming into the sixth grade used to the idea, so they run a little local program there for that.
Mr. Akers, sort of help me break down those 40398 students by program, and is there a trend over the last few years? Have we seen the summer, secondary summer school growing and? growing? And original credit, repeat and recovery, can you kind of?
I think there's been a little bit of a decline in the original credit with a few exceptions. The students who are preparing to take a very rigorous program of studies, we do have a lot of students who will want to come in and take health class, for example, or Foundations of Technology early, you know, in their, between their freshman sophomore year, to make room in their schedule for more AP classes, or in the case of North High, IB classes. So I've seen growth in those particular courses. But in general, I think I've seen a little bit of a decline in the original credit. And part of that is as we incorporate the Common Core curriculum, there are going to be more and more assessed courses. And we do not offer assessed courses in summer school. So as the list of assessed courses grows, the number of courses we're going to offer in, for original credit, is probably going to decline. It'll be, it'll be more along the lines of elective-type courses. As far as the breakdown, I can tell you that of those 398, 90 students participated, 99 were at South, 99, coincidentally, were at North, 41 at Boonsborough, 64 at Smithsburg. Williamsport had 60, Clear Spring had 35. And included in their number would also be a couple of Hancock students.
Hancock. What was the Clear Spring again?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And they earned 45 credits, those 35 students. So that means a fairly good percentage of them earned two credits.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Williams?
If I may, I'd like to pass some more questions that are similar, some questions that have come to mind. We've been using this model for elementary summer school now for a number of years. And I'm wondering if, in planning, if there had been any discussion of, I know we talk a lot about schools having autonomy, have we discussed the possibility of rather than having this county-wide system, whether we use one site or multiple sites, that we have the schools do their own summer school, each faculty, each staff, each principal deciding what his or her students need, and just giving them an allocation to be able to front-load the school year if they choose to do that? Or was that part of the discussion? Or is it that we see that this has some benefit to it, whether it's more cost-effective or better?
I think the biggest piece is that cost-effective. You know, we tried to run at 27 elementary schools a program. The staffing would be a tremendous amount. You know, you figure even if you had four teachers at each school site, you're looking at over 100 teachers. Right now, I'm staffing just 40 teachers, and I barely got 40 to fill this program. So a concern would be is trying to attract the number of staff. We would need to fulfill that. The other thing, too, is looking at, in terms of cost-effectiveness, you would have to have a nurse at each of the sites. You'd have to, you know, again, with the teachers at each of the sites, transportation could be a lot heavier cost because instead of just running the hubs, you'd have to figure out if we were going to offer transportation, figure out all the transportation routes in a normal site. So there's, there's a lot of, I think there would be a lot more costs. I think it would be a tremendous amount of money to do that. Are there some pros at having some of the autonomy? I'm sure there would be. But also, I think there's a lot of cons to that, too, because we would have, I think there'd be some challenges in terms of measuring the progress at each of the schools, measuring the rigor of the programs at each of the schools. With the six sites, at least, we know that we have a very focused intention to what we're doing with the program.
Thank you. With this many students, we're talking, what, 600 that we have targeted? I'm wondering if there's something more that needs to be happening during that 180 days that we have, whether there are more, I don't know, varied or different interventions for these students, or if there's a need for specialists, reading specialists, something that can address their needs before we get to the situation where they need 19 days of six hours a day, summer school. So that's just part of my, part of my thinking. Thank you.
Right.
Just one question, Rick, I'm sorry. The original credit, now I see there's no transportation for those students, which is, you know, I understand the cost and everything. But we are getting to a point, you know, operating with a 24-credit type, you know, for students, we offer this 24-credit six-year program. And how many of those are mandated? For English, for math, three science, three social studies, 14 right there, one phys ed, foundations, I've forgotten, but we're almost 16, 18 credits are mandated by state?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So that's six. We've got a flexibility of six classes. And, you know, most of these kids, I understand, these are kids who are trying to, you know, to get stuff out of the way, you know. Providing them with transportation, if we can get more kids that would want to do that, I would think that might be a benefit to the students, cost to us probably. But, you know, I'm concerned now, 24 credits, I mean, 24 hours and 18 credits already mandated, and they're looking for, I think there's talk about the literacy, economic literacy or?
Financial.
Financial literacy. Thank you very much. You know, be another one. I mean, it doesn't seem like it ever stops, and we only have so many hours in a day.
That you mentioned the transportation for original credit. Because this is new to us, using these depot stops, transportation is telling me they're predicting that they will be able to handle the original credit. But we don't, we're not advertising that yet, you know, that they're going to do a wait-and-see, and then we would be able to announce at the school, hey, if you want to catch the bus in your neighborhood, there's room. But they want to make sure there is room before we sort of make that announcement.
The unfortunate thing is that a lot of kids, you know, that that's going to be a late announce.
They're going to make plans.
Right.
You know, it's going to be difficult. You know, if they make a decision to, you know, to go ahead and do that, they would probably be trying to make that ahead of time, or might have made it ahead of time if transportation was available. Just a thought for the future, I, you know, I think it's going to become unless we can make some arrangements or changes that allow us to get, move some things to middle school or whatever the case might be. I think they're going to run into this more and more in the future. There's only so much kids can do. Thank you. Thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
Well, Cox.
You know, I think, Mr. Ridenhour, you raise a very interesting point. And I think one of the ways that we're going to resolve that is by looking at more and more opportunities for kids to take some of these courses in a different manner. So Foundations of Technology, why wouldn't you offer that online for kids so they could take it whenever they wanted to? The same thing with the health component for kids. Those really should be online opportunities for our kids. They could take one over the course of summer. I watched my daughter do her Foundations of Technology class, and quite honestly, I was appalled by the fact that she was using outdated worksheets that were just, she was asked to do that. I didn't understand the relevance to technology, quite honestly. So I think we have to rethink that, and that way we can create some space for kids. I think there are also some other classes that kids will be able to take online in the not-too-distant future. Quite honestly, for some kids, they may be the best option, so they can really spend time with a great classroom teacher in the subjects that they're vitally interested in.
I think, too, something that I've mentioned to you, I know right now, I believe Foundations of Technology is mandated in high schools. It is not a high school class by any stretch of the imagination. I could pass it, which says not much about the course, you know, when it comes to technology. But it's one of those things that I'm not sure belongs in the high school. You know, I think it would be better suited in the middle school, or even for some kids, you know, fifth, sixth grade, you know, with the amount of technology that they are exposed to on a daily basis. They understand it better than most people. So maybe it was a right, the right idea at the time. I think now it's long outlived its usefulness, and it takes up a class in the high school that can be used, better utilized, you know, for writing programs or, you know, writing technology or writing computer programs, whatever the case might be, what we can teach them at that level. And, you know, with their amount of knowledge, I just think there's better things we can do with our time there. So, you know.
We're actively pursuing some of these other options, so.
Yeah, I think that's a grand idea. Thank you very much. Thanks, Rick. Appreciate it.
Perfect. Any more questions? Yes, Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Akers, the summer school for middle school students will focus on literacy and mathematics. Is that correct?
It does, and academics in general. I think they do some-
Academics in general.
Yeah, I think they do some pre-teaching. You know, I think there is some setup for the next year.
Okay. I didn't see anything in your overheads, your print, that indicated how they will be assessed.
Yes. What we've done with a couple of these programs, like the transition program, the way we've been assessing that is looking at the students who were invited, you know, because we have a certain population of students that we invite. And then we compare their performance during the school year to the students who were invited and didn't come, you know, so that we're comparing apples to apples. It's not really fair to compare them to the general population because there are certain academic reasons. They were identified in the first place to, you know, to come. So that's how we've been kind of monitoring the success. And with that program, we look at how many credits they go on to earn their freshman year. With the middle school, I think if we're going to, it would basically be the same thing. They're looking at students who aren't passing their coursework. And so looking at how many of them go on to improve the percentage of courses that they're passing when they go on to the next grade level. But the ones who are transitioning to high school, what we monitor and keep data on in that transition program is how many credits they go on to earn their freshman year in comparison to those who were invited to participate who chose not to.
As an example, if a seventh-grade youngster does not pass mathematics course during the regular school year and enrolls here, can, you don't get credits in middle school, but can, can the summer school supersede the grades that he or she obtained during the regular school year?
Not really in middle school because they don't have credits. It's really-
So what would be the motivation to, to try to improve?
Well, because we don't have credits. I mean, the motivation is they're trying to make sure that they're going to be allowed to go to high school at the end of eighth grade. And that's really the motivation. And students who, in that sixth grade to seventh and seventh to eighth summer schools, are trying, hopefully, not to be the students who might be in that transition program, because students who are not successful in the transition programs are sometimes retained in the eighth grade. I mean, that's something we've tried to move away from because we don't want to have a axe hanging over their head while they're in there. We, you know, we want them to be cooperative in trying to learn. But it is, the original design of the transition was just that. If you weren't successful in it, then you were retained in the eighth grade. Like I say, we've gotten kind of flexible on that. But, but that is, as far as the motivation, it is so that they can start passing their courses the next year. I mean, typically, your seventh-grader who's having those kinds of struggles is not necessarily even aware that when they get to high school, they're going to have to earn credits. I mean, all they know is, since kindergarten, they've, or at least since first grade, and at least until our new report cards came out, that, you know, they were either passing or failing their coursework. And so they, you know, hopefully, in conjunction with the counselor, teachers, and their parents, they're making that decision that I'm tired of getting Ds and RFs, and I want to start getting passing grades, so I'm going to go to summer school.
If a youngster is retained in this seventh grade, regular school year, can he do summer school work to remove that retention?
Could. That, I mean, that would be a school-based decision. I mean, could that be the leverage if a principal says to this seventh-grader, you have a choice?
It'd be a carrot or to-
Yes. And I suspect that is probably pretty common practice, but that would be, you know, based on discussions that have gone on all year long between the counselor, the principal, and the parent, and using whatever leverage you need to so the student will go there and participate and engage. Because getting them there is one thing. You still have to get them to engage while they're there.
I think, Mr. Bailey, the thing that I would say as superintendent is, you know, I certainly am not in favor, you know, as a general practice of retention, because we know what that does to kids over time. It leads to higher rates of dropout behavior, it leads to all kinds of other things. At the same time, I'm not someone who believes that we should socially promote kids simply because they had a birthday. That said, I think we've got to do a better job during the 180 days that we have them so they don't get themselves in a position where in 19 days, what they didn't do in 180 supposedly they learned, I think we all know that's not possible. So we're going to continue to take middle school like we have over the last two years with elementary school. Elementary school, we shifted from kind of at the end of the school year to the beginning of the school year, so we have that acceleration piece. We now, for the first time ever, have both a series of measurements. We can talk about academic progress. We have focused the learning from just kind of a skip-to-laloo, my darling kind of thing to reading and math. We're engaging new community partners. Those are all things that didn't happen only two years ago. So middle school is probably going to come up relatively shortly, but we have to get our hands around elementary first because we believe that early intervention is better on.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harsman?
Since we allow high school students to take college-credit courses, has any consideration been given for middle school eighth graders to have some of their classes count as high school classes?
We do that currently with foreign language. And in reference to what Mr. Ridenhour was talking about, I have spoken with Catherine Oliver at MSDU, and FOT can be taught in the eighth grade. Now, we're not set up to do that yet, but that's something we can look at in the future. But we also have students who earn math credits, Algebra I credit in middle school that counts towards high school. We used to have geometry, but since the Common Core was introduced, then it's not to be taught in middle school. So, but they can still earn their algebra credit while they're in middle school if they're an advanced math student.
How long have we been doing that?
As long as I can remember, the geometry and algebra were available in foreign language.
When I was in the eighth grade. Let me tell you, I didn't count mine.
Yeah. And we've been doing the foreign language probably for, I'm going to guess, eight to nine years. We've been doing the foreign language, but I think math was even before that. I might have those reversed. Yeah. They started one right after the other.
So when we have a situation where they have to have four math credits for high school?
That's actually changed, though.
Even though they need four credits, they also have to take it all four years. So you can't, you can't get a jump on it and not take it your senior year.
So you can't have that one and then no.
Right. Which is a good thing.
You can do that with foreign language. You could jump that, but not with math.
Wouldn't have been for-
Yeah, for English people, that would-
For English people, no. Thank you.
All right. Great discussion. Any further comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you both for your 10-minute presentation.
Okay, personnel action. Mrs. Francisco, welcome.
Hi. Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed in closed session this afternoon, there are several personnel actions for your consideration this evening.
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
I'm chairman. I move for adoption of personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. A second.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Okay, all those in favor? Six-zero. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports to the board. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to start with HR?
No.
Oh, all right. Mrs. Harshman, would you like to start?
No, no, I'm trying to remember.
HR Human Committee meeting.
The eighth, we had a meeting the eighth, it was a short one. We made some decisions on some, we're moving towards dumping some more stuff on our illustrious policy committee. We're looking at some HR policies that are outdated, that need some adjustment, and some recommendations will be coming from staff. Don't panic, Jackie, there's nothing that's, you know, being mandated by the state that you have to do yesterday. We will meet again the 28th and take a look at, you know, how far we've come on what we...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Correct? Twenty-second?
Yes.
Yes. It's 10 o'clock.
In the HR conference room at nine...
Ten.
Ten. Got it. Thank you.
Dumping stuff is the technical terminology?
Yes.
Oh. We're dumping... Mr. Bailey, a little something on facilities?
Nothing to report beyond what we did the last time. We haven't met since.
Okay.
We're going to be meeting at the new Bester Elementary School next time.
Very good. Ms. Fisher, policy?
I'll apologize to Dr. Wilcox because I've got a long one. Policy committee met on April the 9th. We started with a review of policy GBEE, which is Employee Use of Social Media. Some changes and additions were made by Mrs. Francisco and Mr. Chick, and following some suggestions from the committee members, the policy, excuse me, was remanded to staff to revise. Facilities Committee presented four policies to the policy committee, which they had reviewed. We had quite a discussion on those four and decided that actually they could be combined into one policy, so we've sent them back to the facilities committee to work on. Comments from board members on the student discipline policy, which were gathered during our previous board meeting, were applied to the policy. It will be coming back to the board next month after, or for a second read after it's been posted for public comment. We continued our review of Section B. VCH, which is Consultants to the Board, is being worked on by staff for our next meeting. We've decided to put together an ad hoc committee to be appointed to work with policies on orientation for board candidates and for new board members. That'll be forthcoming. Finally, BI, which is School Board Legislation Program, was discussed. Mrs. Brightman was a guest at that part of the meeting. Dr. Harding's is going to be working on a draft to revise the policy, and a discussion ensued about making the Quick Response Team a new board standing committee. We're continuing to work on that policy, and we will be meeting on April 22nd at 10:00 AM in the Hagerstown Room.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, question on the student discipline. We originally thought we'd have it ready on May 6th for a second read. Am I hearing that it won't be ready by May 6th or will?
Yes, it's next month.
I just, because there was some discussion in the agenda committee whether it would be ready or not?
Oh, as far as I know, it will be. Mr. Trotta, I'm like, I'm getting a nod from Mr. Trotta.
So, on the agenda for May 6th, second read. Okay. Thank you very much. Mrs. Williams, finance?
Yes, the finance committee was to meet on Tuesday, April 22nd, and that meeting has been rescheduled for Wednesday, April 23rd at 9:30 in the finance conference room.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Harshman, curriculum instruction?
We have not met since our last board meeting, but we will be meeting April 22nd in the board conference room at 11:15. The agenda will be posted.
Thank you. Onto miscellaneous business, sort of going over future agenda. On April 22nd, we have a joint meeting with the mayor and council of Hagerstown, 3:00 to 4:00 PM. There is a change of location, if everyone would like to note, it will not be in the city administration office, but in Suite 200 of the Elizabeth Hager Center. So, and that will be coming out in your agendas, your packets on Friday, just to remind you, we have a joint meeting with the county commissioners on May 6th, be going over pupil generation rates and another legislative update.
Madam President?
Yes.
The meeting with the mayor and city council, just because I know we have interested folks sitting in the lobby, will likely be, there will be a motion to close that meeting because we're talking about the real acquisition of policy of purchasing property.
Very good. Thank you. Other than that, we're looking at board member comments, and we'll start with Mrs. Harshman?
No.
No, we won't. Okay, nobody's, okay, we're down with Mrs.
Actually, I'm kidding. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Green and Mrs. Norris and Mr. Stark out at Potomac Heights. I spent two days with their students on Tuesday and Thursday of last week. Tuesday, I went on a field trip, and believe me, kindergartners on a bus is nothing like snakes on a plane. These were excellent students. They just did a wonderful job. We went to see the Wizard of Oz, part of it, and the kids enjoyed it immensely. In the afternoon and on Thursday, I helped make spring baskets, and we worked on color blending by dyeing eggs. So I just had a wonderful two days out at Potomac Heights, and I would like to thank all the students and parents and the teachers and Mr. Stark for their cooperation and for allowing me to come and assist with the students.
Mrs. Williams?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Nothing? Mrs. Fisher.
I've always been an advocate, or had always been an advocate, I guess, for universal kindergarten. And now that the state is moving forward toward universal pre-K, I am very pleased. I know we'll be getting a detailed report later on in June or July on readiness of our kindergarten children. I was glad to see from the state reports, though, that Washington County has made some significant increases since our last evaluation by the state, and I'd like to thank those teachers and staff that are responsible.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I have nothing to comment tonight.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, ma'am. I don't usually like to do this, but I'd like to give a shout-out to a couple of students in our schools, Smithburg High School in particular. There's so much great, so many good things going on, so many great things going on, but this is kind of unique, and there's a connection here with us that you'll figure out in a couple of minutes. The first is for Osama Kadri, who is a senior at Smithburg High School. He will be the third of the family in a row, three boys in a row, who will be attending Yale in the, in the fall, which is pretty remarkable when you think about it. And the other individual is a young lady, Atiya Latif, who was just named and accepted, offered and accepted the Jefferson Scholar, into the Jefferson Scholar Program. And those of you who are familiar with the Jefferson Scholarship, it is considered one of the two best scholarships awarded in the country each year. There are 30 students who, just to give you an idea, you have to be nominated by your school, then you're assigned to a region, regional area, and you are part of the regional selection process executed by University of Virginia alumni. It has three levels of selection, application, and up to two interviews just to become a finalist. And when you become a finalist, you are brought to the University of Virginia for four days. During that time, students, the weekend includes time dedicated to informative activities, specialized tour of Jefferson's Monticello, but the majority of the weekend is activities where the individual merits can be judged. Judges utilize math and logic exam, a written essay, two sets of faculty moderated panel discussions based on readings that have been provided the prior weekend, and a final interview with a panel of judges to select the class. And of the finalists, 30 students are selected, which is less than 3% of those originally nominated. And once you are selected, the scholarship includes, oh goodness gracious, it includes tuition, fees, books, supplies, room and board, and personal expenses. So it is, it's a big deal. And the connection that I was speaking to is Osama Kadri, Usman's brother was student board member when I first came on the board, Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Fisher shaking their heads. And Ms. Latif's brother was a student board member not too very long ago.
Three, was it?
Yeah, and is doing very well at the university, or at Duke University right now. So, you know, I'm very proud of these young people. They're wonderful. I know them both, wonderful young people, and we should be very happy. It just shows what's going on in our schools, that we can prepare our kids, you know, for something of that magnitude. So, a real shout-out to both of them.
Thank you for sharing. Great information. Dr. Wilcox, any comments?
Thank you this evening.
Okay, very good. Well, we've run out of the agenda. Yes.
I have just one additional bit of information. If you have not been over to City Park Museum, please go. The students have their artwork up, is the most unusual and beautiful display I have ever seen. I helped put some up for Potomac Heights after I was out there, and it's just really interesting artwork. We also have some posted, I see in the halls, that are beautiful. So please stop to look at them. They are well worth the trip. Thank you.
Last call. No further business before the board? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.